Good afternoon, everyone. I want to welcome you to our land calling the meeting to order. And I will now introduce Mike Merrill to continue with the agenda. And I'm going to ask members if you would please hold your questions till after the full presentation is made. Thank you.
All right. Just briefly to introduce the topic, which is really a continuing conversation about how we grow, how we invest, certainly not the end of the conversation, probably more the beginning of the conversation. And the importance of it really relates to the approach that we all aboard and we are taking in the way that we pay for and deliver services in this county. And so it's a prudent approach, which is to minimize the tax burden on our constituents and our businesses and rely, to a large extent, on the growth in existing taxes, fees, and so forth. Where that becomes important is that 70% of our revenue, plus or minus, comes from property taxes to pay for services and infrastructure. So if 70% of our current revenue and future growth revenue is coming from property taxes, that means that, and that's what we want to rely on to provide service, we have to be sure that, from a sustainability point of view, we are creating as much value as we can from the remaining real estate, because that's the, under this model, the only way that we really see growth and revenue to pay for things. And there is, of course, not an inexhaustible amount of land left, and that's part of what we're going to talk about today. Finding the balance between what should be developed, what should be preserved, is also part of that. But for any business, public or private, that has a limited resource, one wants to step back and take a look at how best to optimize the value of that to sustain, really, the livelihood, in our case, of our community and the prosperity of our businesses that fuel our local economy. So that's really what we're here to talk about today, and there's many facets to it. As I said, it's the beginning of the conversation. We're not asking for any action by the board today. This is really a continuation of providing you information, discussion, and so forth. So with that, I will turn it over to Lucia.
Okay. And before Lucia starts, I need to read two memorandums into the record. This is from Commissioner Ken Hagan. Please be advised that due to a previously scheduled event, I will be unable to attend today's land use workshop. Please read the reason for my absence into the record. Thank you. And this is from Commissioner Al Higginbotham. I am unable to attend today's land use and population projection workshop. Please read this memo into the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This really is a continuation, as Mike Merrill said, of topics that you have been discussing and projects that we're working on. Really does, though, today, I think, start to focus the lens on how we look at projects. We went back and looked at a couple of studies, the ULI study that was done back in 2010 that actually called for a framework for responsible and sustainable growth, a committee that was chaired by Commissioner Merman and Miller later on, on economic prosperity. And it really did touch on all of those topics as well. So it has been a theme that we have been working with for a number of years. Today's workshop really is to do a couple of things, and that is to address a number of topics that deal with this. But first, to address the modernizing and streamlining of economic development policies. Recently, you had a plan amendment that came before you. Issue was raised of how do we protect competitive sites? Lindsay Kimball will be here to talk about that streamlining initiative. And then, really, looking at some of the projects that we're working on through this lens of investing in our community, looking at guiding principles in the investment framework, going through, just briefing you on some of the projects that we're working on and how they relate to this. And then Melissa to provide, really, the context for population and job growth, which really is the overarching kind of project that is going to influence how we grow and where we grow. So having said that, I think I'll ask Lindsay to come up and really talk about what work has been done on reshaping land use policies to accommodate economic development.
Thank you, Lucia. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Lindsay Kimball, Director of Economic Development. Today, I'm going to speak to you about the linkages between economic development and land use policies. The subject is directly related to three critical questions that need to be addressed. How do we sustain the proper balance of jobs and housing? How do we maintain our dominant position in this marketplace? And how do we ensure fiscal sustainability? As Lucia mentioned at the L U Z meeting on March 1st, there was a robust discussion around policies governing the conversion of land designated for job creation uses and converting those uses to something other than, such as residential or retail. As evidenced by the meeting, our current policies are not specific enough and need to be more definitive, so we can ensure that existing future job centers are available and in the right locations. While we have made great strides and are recognized as a leader in the state in economic development by having proactive programs that you've approved, such as competitive sites, the redevelopment pilot project area program, the expedited permitting program, the mobility fee buy-down program, and everything else that you do to make this a business-friendly community, we recognize that the good work that has begun must continue, and the hard work of staying the course is with us whenever we're faced with a land use change. Because of your leadership and decisions to invest in economic development as a board, we have been a most successful county. Over the past 10 years, the average wage in Hillsborough County has increased by nearly $10,000. That's more than any other major county in the state, and its second highest increase in percent terms of 23%. Also, we've seen 11% increase in the number of financial services jobs specifically, and that's the largest of any major metro area during this time period. And I want to note that most of our other competitors in other urban counties actually saw a decrease and have still not yet recovered from the recession. We're competing every day in a marketplace against local and national competitors, and we operate in a regional economy. We know that. In 2040, if a company chooses our market, the regional market, will we still be the preferred choice? It all comes down to a site. Or will talent and jobs start flowing into the outlined counties? One factor that will quickly constrict the flow of new jobs is the lack of land on which to put them. It simply comes down to, will we have enough sites to support jobs? As you can see, according to the recent ULI study, we will need approximately 100 million square feet of office and industrial to meet current future needs. The competitive sites are currently entitled to support about 26 million square feet of office and industrial, but obviously, you can see, there's a 74 million square foot disconnect. We need a balance between residential growth and where we identify lands for job creation. This disconnect is particularly evident in the South County area. This balance is important because it supports fiscal sustainability, as Mike mentioned. Office and industrial users generate more tax revenue than they use in services. And as we know, I think this board has discussed in the past, residential rarely pays its way unless it's a high-end development. So job generating land uses are not just important because they're going to lower someone's commute time or increase their quality of life, but they're going to lower tax burden on the residential uses proportionally. Exacerbating the situation is the fact that the 26 million square feet that we do have identified as entitled is being diminished by two forces of the market, one negative, one positive. Within the last three years, 124 acres or 833,000 square feet of potential office and industrial space has been converted to something other than, which is retail and residential. On a positive note, our competitive sites provided 274 acres for 2.4 million square feet of office and industrial space. We're in a strong growth cycle, and our programs are meeting their objectives, but this still won't deny the fact that inventory is shrinking. And we believe we're at a tipping point where it will be critical to make land use decisions that create jobs and a housing balance, maintain our competitiveness, and ensure fiscal sustainability. I love maps, so we threw two in. We have, it's important to visualize where the current inventory of land for job creation is located, which you'll see in the red areas on this map. In most cases, however, these are mixed-use opportunities delineated by the red, meaning not all of the area that you see in red is entitled to support job generating activities. For example, the big blob, if you will, at the South County area is water set. So we know that's mostly residential, though there are some office entitlements in that development. So I just wanted to point that out. In addition, we color-coded green all of the areas which are no-go zones. Those are environmental lands, wetlands, ELAP, something else that's important for our sustainability. And also, I just want to note that along 75 and 301, you can see that corridor of growth and of potential job sites. The next map, you'll see the purple areas here represent new residential construction permitted in the past three years overlaid on the competitive sites. And I do want to note, we did not include the city of Tampa in this analysis. We mapped what we have purview over, what we have control over, and those are the competitive sites in the unincorporated area, though we do work with the city of Tampa hand-in-hand on job creation. The South County is obviously what we call an area of change with massive residential construction occurring, but where will these people work? As I mentioned, only a small fraction of the areas in red are actually entitled for job creation, and these are residential in nature. So the disconnect here is represented visually. What can we do about this? Rezonings and changes to future land uses will adversely impact our job creation goals of the county. We need to make land use policies that support a solid framework and provide for long-term value creation. Strengthening job centers and job creation should be one of our most important land use objectives, and I'm not just saying that because I'm your Economic Development Director. Working as a team with Development Services, Public Works, and the Planning Commission, we've developed three recommendations to meet our new objectives. The first one being, we'd like to add more targeted language to the comp plan that you see here in its current policy, which basically does a little more than give you a vague description of what economic development areas are, but you don't get a lot of guidance on its importance, its relative importance, anything about whether or not it should be protected in any way. It lacks teeth when the board's faced with a rezoning request. You can also see our desired outcome, which is to make clear that these areas are important, and we're working with the team to scrub all the land use policies and bring them back to you so that they can support our economic prosperity, quality community, and fiscal sustainability goals. Secondly, the designation of specific areas for job creation. As I mentioned, the competitive sites program has been successful. It's delivered 2.4 million square feet of office. Our redevelopment program is successful. It's delivered 900,000 square feet of office and warehouse space. We need to identify and protect not just the existing job areas but emerging key economic spaces, as I noted, in South County and within areas of change in the county, so these areas of change do not adversely affect our areas of stability. And finally, we need objective factors that can be used each time you get a request for altering a job-based land use, such as location, size, and its appropriateness for targeted industries. This should be part of the stronger policies and targeted language in the comp plan. We believe through more targeted language designation of existing and emerging areas for job creation and the objective factors test, we can accomplish our goals and ensure the jobs and housing balance in the county is maintained. Our position as the economic center of this region will be reinforced, and fiscal sustainability is achieved through balanced growth of non-residential tax base. And with that, I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for all of the support you've given us for economic development, and I'll hand it back over to Lucia. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. That was very comprehensive, good information.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? A process question?
Oh, sure.
In the end, when Commissioners start asking their questions, is each individual presenter going to have their PowerPoint at their fingertips?
Yes. We'll leave the PowerPoint up.
Great.
I think to that point, point of just clarification, two slides were added to your PowerPoint, and they are in the package that you received. They are designed to really amplify some of the conversations that we've had, and I'll point those out when we get to those. But really, this piece is, as we move forward, investment considerations for future growth. And as Mike said, it really is thinking about how we grow differently. It really is the fiscal impacts on county revenues, land uses, the consequences of land use decisions, the consequences of land use formed relationships to transportation, and really looking at how these projects that we've been working on relate to that. So back in 2015, this board adopted a series of guiding principles for future growth, and again, consistent with the themes that have been coming from previous ULI and economic prosperity committees, really focusing on getting to quality of life through fiscal sustainability, economic prosperity, and responsible growth, and really designing our actions to follow through on that. These were also included in the ULI report, and ULI recognized these as important guiding principles. I think they work today and continue to work. But then, looking at beyond that, more specifically, something that we might call an investment framework. And an investment framework that really does bring together mobility options, get to your point of land use and transportation, having those work together. We'll talk about some examples, 42nd, 46 probably being the main one. Looking at fiscally sustainable growth, looking at some of these projects more as master developers, and how do we get a returnable taxable value? How do we ensure that we have sufficient revenues to accommodate for affordable housing? How can we find creative ways to include affordable housing into our land development projects? And then the last one being the job housing balance and providing economic prosperity through job housing balance, ensuring that we have the economic sites and a housing, related housing that Lindsay spoke to. But I'd like you, these are going to be the new slides, take you through a little bit of how we grew. And it's really interesting to note that we developed along transportation routes. And Hillsborough County really started with a military base in Fort Brooke, and then the surrounding towns and nodes really did appear within the last end of the 1800s. I think what we know from these is that these development patterns, really, if you look at these nodes, they really do provide lessons for us as we move forward. They are economic job centers. Each one had an agricultural purpose, a mining purpose, a timber transplant purpose. They really did have limited mobility options, and so in a way, they were sustainable. They were fiscally sustainable. They were compact. I think the one that you would see in the southeast part of the county is one that we don't know much anymore. It's called Welcome. And Welcome disappeared when the economic vitality disappeared, and it was no longer served by the rail line. And so I think that we talk internally about, we don't want to be Welcome, but Welcome was indeed a community, but is no more. I think what's important, too, is as we grew in the last century, we centered really around transportation nodes, really starting with the streetcar. Eventually, when the streetcar went away, the automobile began to dominate our development patterns. We really, the development patterns became very different than from the nodal development. What's really important in these, though, is that as I-4, I-275 came around, the Selman Expressway that facilitated suburban development, this development pattern, which is a very important choice for our community, does have different cost implications as we move forward. So Melissa will really talk about how we grow in the future as these new population centers begin to emerge, and how do we grow? Where do we grow? And how is it that we grow in a fiscally sustainable manner? What also is another slide that's been added is just kind of an order of context. This is a huge county. We have now grown to be almost equivalent to three cities of Tampa. We have four water plants, seven wastewater plants, 3,300 miles of roads, 26 libraries, 44 fire stations, and abundance of parks. How do we grow in the future that these investments into capital, and then how do they serve our community, and how do I, how do we operate them? Investment that spans almost 800 square miles and a million people, how do we do this in a way that we can ensure that there is sustainability, fiscal sustainability, that it's responsible and does provide for economic prosperity? So just moving forward and kind of going through some of the project and projects and how they relate to our investment framework, looking at job housing balance and all of these transportation, land use, and fiscally sustainable growth, will really depend, determine how our growth patterns and our tax revenues and our fiscal ability to maintain ourselves can coincide as we grow to possibly 500,000, 600,000 people in the year 2045. The job housing balance, of course, as Lindsay mentioned, is important because the closer people are to work, the less they have to drive, the fewer roads we have to provide, the more opportunities there are for transit. It becomes more and more feasible for us to reduce the service areas for fire stations, for libraries, for parks. So a job housing balance is a critical piece. And I think the one example, the piece that we show here is to reiterate Lindsay's point is, development is happening in the south and east part of the county. Jobs, if you look at the left slide, the time that it takes for people to travel to jobs, the darker the color, the browner the color, the longer the distance, we see that people in the south and eastern parts of the county are traveling longer distances. And as Lindsay said, the balance between jobs and housing just isn't there. So it, important features we consider and move forward. But one of the places that we believe is a real opportunity to capture this job housing balance is the Tampa Innovation Place. Many, of course, you know, the many employers there, Moffitt, USF, and all of the Kindred Medical and Related Facilities that are out there. As redevelopment occurs, it's a perfect opportunity to look at this as one of the nodes, and the nodes that kind of carry the features of the nodes from the 1800s of being compact, of providing sustainability, responsible growth, and being in an area that creates an easier way for us to serve, thereby reducing some of the costs that it takes to serve. The other one that is new, a new addition to this, it has been offered up as an opportunity zone, and it carries all of the features that are important for an opportunity zone, features of affordability and addressing low-income populations as well. So it really is a laboratory and an opportunity to really take advantage of this job housing balance and really work toward the economic prosperity. The other piece that I think is important in the transportation land use connection that you have all spoken about, you have convinced us to look at land use and transportation in a very much more dynamic, meaningful way. So the cultural change here has been helping our planners and engineers understand what languages they speak. And out of that came what we call plat studies. And these plat studies are really a way to engage data, information, and understand how and why we're building roads, road options, mobility options, trail options. And so this piece is being engaged of looking at these factors on all of the projects that you recently approved. 46th Street expansion, 131st Street, Lithia Pinecrest, 19th Avenue, Big Bend Road. This is not your grandmother's old PD&E anymore. It really does engage a lot of different principles. And I think the one project that is probably an example of this is the 46th and 42nd study area that really did reveal how important it is to understand the factors of who lives there, where do they go, how do they go, where do they travel? And so just very quickly, this piece that was a part of the Innovation Place, so also handily working hand-in-hand with Innovation Place, just analyzing demographics before we build roads, understanding that in this piece, in this area here, yes, there are a number of young people who are traveling. They travel by bicycle, by foot, and other options. They're not using their vehicles. But there are also a lot of seniors in that area, too. Finding ways of differentiating why 42nd Street and 46th Street are different. And while we thought 42nd Street would be the street that we would open up to meet Bruce B. Downs after this analysis, what we really learned from travel patterns is that 46th Street is going to be the road that makes more sense. And so in this analysis, it really is looking to see where cars are coming from, where they're going, traffic patterns, accident rates, to reduce accidents as well, and working with some of the vision zero criteria. And then really taking a look at what is the form, what is the appropriate form for these expansions of roadways or road widensings, and looking more at how these roadways function. 46th Street was designed to be initially thought of as a pedestrian route, but it really isn't. With the simple things like rerouting the Bull Runner and using 46th as the vehicular, predominantly vehicular corridor, and 42nd as a pedestrian corridor, we begin to separate those things and really meet some of the objectives that really are intended to address pedestrian fatalities and accidents. So really kind of looking at fiscally sustainable growth and going back a little bit, talking about the nodal development that we introduced earlier, as we look at these projects, again, looking for opportunities where we can find nodes that help us look at efficient land use, generating higher property taxes, preserving land. And one of the examples that really is one that is relevant to this is the continuation of the work that was done on the Brandon Corridor Study. Brandon Study began as a transit option, looking at transit opportunities along State Road 60. Planning Commission staff identified a number of nodes. And now, after looking at the market and a number of other factors, we have zoomed in on these two particular areas around the hospital and immediately to the west as an opportunity for really a master-planned project for nodal development, analyzing opportunities for appropriate land uses, analyzing how we best manage this, really looking for P3 opportunities, and maybe treating this, looking for a master developer who might be able to look at this project in its entirety, in its whole, so that we are able to offer redevelopment opportunities and then capture all the benefits as it relates to fiscal sustainability. So those are the key pieces here, and that is, again, the lens and the context that we would provide, and as Melissa comes up and talks about moving forward with population growth and where we go from here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Melissa.
Good afternoon. Melissa Zornita, Planning Commission. Thank you so much for having me here to talk a little bit about some of the things we've discussed at some of your land use meetings about our look forward to 2045 and how we might grow, where we might grow. So building on Lucia's slides about how we got to here, now that we're at this point, where do we head from here? And what does that mean for transportation, for jobs, for housing and infrastructure? So looking at our 2016 population, we're at about 1.3 million people here in Hillsborough County, and the projection to 2040 is that we'll get just over 2 million people. Similarly, for jobs, we're at about 830,000 jobs in Hillsborough County and are anticipated to reach over 1.2 million jobs. So that's approximately 714 more people and 454 more jobs. And so our task is to start to figure out how we can accommodate that growth in a fiscally sustainable manner that protects the quality of life that we have here in Hillsborough County. Our work to date has been focused on many of the trends that we've been seeing in our community, things like lot size and employment trends, where the development activity has been occurring, and what our policies allow for, and some of the demographic trends that we've been seeing. I'm going to focus in on a couple of things that I think directly relate to our creating a more fiscally sustainable development pattern for the community. So this map shows the allowable densities in the comprehensive plan, sort of aggregated them all together. And as you can see, the lower densities are in the rural service area, just where we'd want them to be, and then the higher density- And then the higher densities growing to over 100 units per acre in the city of Tampa in some areas. So this is what's allowed. And this map shows how we've actually developed. And our development pattern is much less than what is allowed in the comprehensive plan. To further illustrate this, we have a chart by jurisdiction of what their average developed density is versus what the average density in the comprehensive plan is. And as you can see, there's a pretty big differential for all four of our local governments that we're not hitting the higher densities that are allowed in the comprehensive plan. Just to illustrate, the average single-family density countywide today is about 3.5 dwelling units per acre, which might be something similar to what's shown in the picture at the top. The average multifamily density countywide is 13.5 dwelling units per acre. And there certainly are opportunities where we are seeing higher-density development, both single-family and multifamily development, in pockets in our community that are fitting in really nicely. And so one of the questions as we proceed might be, how can we encourage more of that? Next, we took a look at the Floria ratios. So this is the measure of intensity of non-residential development. And similarly, you can see the higher-intensity areas allowed by the comprehensive plan in areas downtown, around our economic employment centers, and along some of the nodes along our corridors. But looking at how we've actually developed, we're considerably less, again, than what our comprehensive plan would allow in terms of intensity of non-residential development. And again, across the board, for all four local governments, we're seeing on average that they're developing considerably less than what the comprehensive plan would permit. And just as an example, again, a commercial center like is shown at the top of this slide would have a Floria ratio of around a 1.0 FAR. But as an example of a much greater utilization and better return on investment, you can see the recent USAA building and that that has a Floria ratio of a .38. So that's getting the county a greater return on its investment. We've also been studying trends in the East Rural Agricultural Study Area. The study area is shown on the screen. And we've been looking at the changes in the land uses over the last 10 years in that area, so from 2007 to 2017. And while we've seen a decrease in agricultural uses by about 4.8%, the predominant area where that has converted to has been natural preservation as well as some mining lands. So those conversions are mostly going to that probably due to the success of the ELAP program and some of those purchases of conservation lands in the rural area. About 10% has converted to large lot, single-family residential development. That is on par with what is the goal of the comprehensive plan for the amount of development that would occur in the rural area. All of these trends that we've looked at have led us to arrive at the conclusion that we've got approximately 50,000 acres of land that is either vacant and developable or is potentially redevelopable. And we took a pretty conservative look at what was redevelopable because we didn't want to overestimate that at this point. And this is across not just the urban service area, but also within the three cities. So if we took a look at how that might, under one scenario, begin to build out over time, you can see that by about 2035, the capacity within the urban service area and the three cities will be built out. And we don't have an exact date exactly, but there's a range in there of about the timeframe in which we'll begin to hit that build-out if we continue to develop under the current trends that we are today. So how will we respond to that? As land becomes more scarce, we would anticipate that there'd be greater pressure on expanding the urban service area. As part of our East Rural Agricultural Study, we took a look at where plan amendments within that area have been occurring. And it's probably no surprise that they're kind of ringing the outside of the urban service area. So that's where we're starting to already see that pressure. So we have a number of options of how we might respond to this impending build-out and scarcity of land for development. One option is to look at further expansion. If we were to continue developing as we are today, the current densities and intensities that we have been traditionally, we would need about 54,000 additional acres to accommodate that remaining population. That would translate to approximately 6,000 acres of impervious service, 700 miles of new streets, 17,600 acres of agriculture consumed. And these are just a few indicators that we've looked at that might begin to illustrate some of the impacts of some of these different choices. And as we begin to explore other choices, we'll look at these same indicators to see how they would compare. Another choice is to focus inward and to put a greater emphasis on redevelopment and infill within the cities and the urban service area. Try to increase and maximize that utilization of our remaining land as well as enhance the opportunities for redevelopment. In one study, as Lucia mentioned, that looked at this was the Brandon Corridors and Mixed Use Centers Project, where we identified areas of potential change as well as areas of stability. The market analysis that we did as part of this project identified that the residential neighborhoods in Brandon were very stable, and that's something we want to protect. But there were opportunities for change, particularly along our commercial corridors. And so the opportunity exists to see how we could further redevelop, as Lucia mentioned, and through some master planning, public-private partnerships along those corridors. How can we create some more opportunities for jobs in these areas since there are people who live close by? And how can we ensure that as these areas do change, that we mitigate the impacts on those stable areas? And then the other choice is that we do a mix of these two, some sort of hybrid where we have some areas of expansion and some areas where we're focusing on redevelopment and infill. The Urban Land Institute's recent study of the I-4 corridor looked at just this, just within that corridor, they identified that there were some opportunities for redevelopment in the Cefner area along MLK and US-92. So that's the picture on the left-hand side of the slide, is of the areas where they thought there could be some opportunities for redevelopment inside the urban service area. And then they also identified that long-term, there may be the need for some development outside the urban service area, creating some economic development nodes that had a mix of residential and employment opportunities outside the urban service area. So this is just an example of how some sort of hybrid solution could be arrived at. And over the coming months, we're going to be very, we hope to continue to get your input on how we shape this, as it will shape the update of the comprehensive plan as well as other efforts. With that, I'll turn it over to Lucia.
Very good, Melissa. Thank you very much.
So then just kind of to wrap up, in addition to what may come out of this workshop and your input, we're continuing then to prepare the amendments for the economic development components for the land use, probably coming to you late summer sometime. The Planning Commission and our staff are continuing to work on population and job growth, anticipating a hybrid model coming to you sometime at the end of the year, so sometime in December, with absolutely intermittent conversations with you about how that works and where it goes and what your concerns are in this area. Continuing to streamline comprehensive plan amendments and bringing those to you, those may be independent infrastructure elements such as water, wastewater, stormwater, as they become available, we may bring those to you then. And then continuing the work on the pilot projects that we mentioned and moving ahead on some of the other ones that you have introduced. And then anything else that might come out of this workshop will be on the next steps list. Thank you so much.
Okay, that is great. There is a lot of information here. So I will call on Commissioner White for the first recognition to ask questions.
Thank you. And as always, when it comes to these topics that are top priorities of mine, I have lots of questions and observations. And I'm going to have questions of Ms. Kimball, Ms. Garsis, and Ms. Zornita. I'll start with Ms. Kimball.
Yes.
Okay. Can you go back to your slide? I believe it was one of the maps, and off to the side, it was labeled limited opportunity.
Sure. I'm clicking it backwards now. Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay. Actually, on this one, I just have a question that's just more out of curiosity, more than anything. The red area out to the east, just south of State Road 60?
Yes.
That's the thing with the energy industrial entitlements on it, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, great. So I don't really need any slides for the rest of my observations from your conversation. It's my understanding, and this actually might turn into some questions for Ms. Zornita or Ms. Lundgren. We don't, other than industrial, when it comes to office space, general commercial uses, things like that, we don't truly address those in the comp plan in terms of having a true comp plan category. We address those more with respect to locational criteria further downstream, right?
Yes. The comprehensive plan includes categories for industrial, light industrial, research, corporate park. So those are sort of discrete categories that would not allow the full range of uses. Absent that, our mixed-use categories include kind of the residential all the way through the industrial. And then in our residential categories, you would have some opportunities for limited commercial or office based on the locational criteria.
Got it. And Ms. Kimball, if I understood you correctly, you're making a call to have more well-defined comprehensive plan categories outside of the context of mixed-use categories that would really add specificity to where we would like to see, for example, office complexes and things like that for economic development.
Yes, sir. That's one of the concepts that we've been talking with the team at the Planning Commission and Development Services, and even perhaps creating a new kind of mixed-use category. These are just some of the ideas that we're talking about, where it would be exclusive, percentage of that land would be dedicated to office uses. And we'd hold the line on that.
I wholeheartedly agree with that concept. And I can just look for head nods from Ms. Garsis and Ms. Zornita, but do you think we can get there? Is that something that's worth exploration? Okay, great.
If I could just maybe reflect on that a second. So absolutely, I think where we're headed is the right direction. The reality of it gets a little bit more difficult.
Right.
Because now you're talking about private property economics and those who hold property and have certain expectations about how they might develop. And so I think one of the things we have to keep in our mind is it may not be one or the other. It may not be either residential or office-industrial. In some cases, it might be an incentive to a landowner.
You hit the nail on the head. So the county and this board, as a matter of policy, could commit to make certain investments in certain areas that would spur
Right.
the type of commercial job-creating development that we're looking for.
Or create other incentives to, which have other ancillary, important ancillary benefits like live, work, play. So, you know, we could either spend, and I'm not saying that this is going to be the case in every instance, we can spend a lot of time arguing and fighting over land use with a property owner that just, you know, says, "That's not how I wanted to use my property." Or we can figure out how to incentivize behaviors. And, you know, I think this is probably where the market economy comes up against local regulation. And it really becomes a different way of looking at land use in the sense that it's not pure regulation, it's the reality of that it is a marketplace. And to the extent that it can be allowed to develop, it really becomes a way we co-create, it's together. It's together with landowners and developers how we can get not just financial value but social value, like affordable housing, and environmental sustainability. And so it really is a different way to engage, I think, with
Sure.
with property owners.
And I'm glad that you mentioned the "live, work, play" catchphrase that we talk so much about. So when we look at something like the East Rural Area that we're studying, and I'm being very real and very honest when I talk about this, just remember that the "play" portion for some people is not getting dressed and walking to the theater and to dinner. For some people, the "play" portion is getting home and jumping on the four-wheeler or jumping on their horse or whatever the case may be. So we have to preserve those types of opportunities on the "play" side of the "live, work, play" equation. So that's great. I think the next thing I have is for Ms. Garsis.
Can I just ask, while we're on this, I don't know, sometimes I think when you're on a particular subject, it's just better to kind of flush it out.
Sure, sure. I can work, sure.
But I mean, you brought up a really good point. So these areas of live, work, and play, can, do we have the ability to set percentages of, like, commercial and residential within, like, zones so that when we get all these land use items, that we can see how it's going to fit in to an area? You know, we've become the strip mall haven in many respects. You all know that. I mean, we're just, I think you highlight that with the Home Depot versus the USAA. That was a perfect example. Maybe we need to start looking at, in the mixed-use areas, like, I don't know if you can do percentages or give us, that there be a guideline for what kinds of development can go in certain areas and how much residential or how much commercial can actually fit into it, so you can have the live, work, play environment. I hope I'm being clear.
Very clear. I think the sort of taking Commissioner White's comment about people play differently in different places, I think it is absolutely doable. But what might happen if you create an all-inclusive category in the comp plan that's intended to work everywhere, it might not. So, for example, ULI Study was indeed that kind of result. It gave us some proportions of what was appropriate there. So it absolutely is something that is doable and very helpful. It is also very helpful to understand the fiscal implications of those proportions. And so if it's all retail or all residential, you know, how do those figure into the fiscal sustainability model? So I would just offer that we do those as maybe as we're proceeding, ULI, I-4 corridor, Brandon, but looking at them with a little more granularity based on where they are and what the desires are in those areas.
I think, I just think of Highway 60. And it's like all one level. And if you're looking at those two areas for development, you know, around the town center area and down there near Parsons, I mean, we need to start thinking of different levels, like residential, and then the commercial fitting into it. So I guess it's just trying to define more so we can get a picture when we get all these land use items on our agenda, we can actually see how it kind of fits in. And it's like all one level. And if you're looking at those two areas for development, you know, around the town center area and down there near Parsons, I mean, we need to start thinking of different levels, like residential, and then the commercial fitting into it. So I guess it's just trying to define more so we can get a picture when we get all these land use items on our agenda, we can actually see how it kind of fits in.
I think the, what is unique too is the consultants that we have hired to do the Phase Two Brandon are not starting necessarily with a model that's an analysis of land uses. They're starting with the analysis of what the market is, the marketability, the availability of sites, and doing that kind of analysis, looking at it as a developer might look at it. So I think it would be right in line with where you're going with it.
I just want us to stop just being the king of strip malls everywhere. I mean, I just don't think it makes us look beautiful. I just, you know, we've got, it'll make us, give us a different feel as a community if we can really start to get away from that. And I'll give it back to Commissioner White to finish.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to interject.
Ms. Garsis, can you go to your first How We Grew slide? My comment on your first slide is just going to be kind of a fun comment, but I think it's important. You know, I've talked so much about Sense of Place, and I think all my colleagues on the board have talked about Sense of Place. Boy, I couldn't help but notice that you chose Showtown for the picture of Gibsonson. And, you know, we all know that they have a real, and I'm being serious, you know, there's a real heritage there with respect to the carnival business. And I know we have policies in our comprehensive plan that address that. We all know things that, things change over time. You know, we know that the tomato is no longer the king in Ruskin. There may come a time when the carnival business in Gibsonson is, doesn't have the presence that it does today. And I'll tell you, just as a sidebar, we all know that New York is the Big Apple, right? There were real popular bumper stickers when I was a kid in Ruskin that said, "I love Ruskin the Big Tomato." Instead of a picture of the apple, they had a picture of a tomato. But when we talk about Sense of Place, you know, and we look at form-based code and different tools in the tool chest, you know, I think it's important to honor that heritage in areas like that, even as things change. So you may not see a lot of tomatoes grown in Ruskin anymore, but, you know, over time, I think if you still honor that heritage, it can really provide for that quality of life and Sense of Place that we talk about. And I'm talking about themes, you know, theme development and things like that as we look at ways to honor that heritage. Now, I believe it's the next slide that was kind of dynamic. It changed as you clicked through it. And I tell you, there was, I'm going to ask you to pause at a certain portion. Right, but, right before that one, right before that one. Yeah, that's probably, that's probably an okay graphic. You know, that's, that's kind of the, well, we, it's not cooperating. That's okay. You got, you got the look at it. You know, I'm not an old guy yet. I feel like I'm getting to be an old guy sometimes, but I'm still, still pretty young. But, you know, I've really watched, I've really watched.
You have no idea.
Yeah. Well, I tell you what, in my short lifespan, I have really watched Southern and Eastern Hillsborough County transform like you wouldn't believe. So, you know, when I was a real young kid, you still had a lot of people that worked on the farm, didn't go very far, a lot of retirees, retirement communities. And you fast forward to about, to about this level that we're looking at, and it speaks to that automobile-centric development pattern that I've talked a lot about. You know, where developers sought cheap land, inexpensive land, however you want to put it, out in East County, and, you know, by and large, the majority of people would commute into downtown Tampa. And this sort of ties in with Ms. Kimball's portion of the conversation, but, you know, that, we all know that that model is not going to be sustainable. And that's where, you know, where we already have developed in South and East County within the urban service area, that those local job opportunities are going to be important. And to Mr. Merrill's point, you know, I'm not opposed to looking at it on a mixed-use basis, you know, whether that be, you know, as we have in the past, or whether it's through some new comprehensive plan models, because I recognize that you have to have, in most cases, the mix of, of commercial and residential. So I guess I'm just driving a point home there that I think staff is readily aware of, and I think my colleagues on the board are readily aware of, that we're going to have to have significant job centers beyond, you know, the urban core of Tampa. Ms. Zornita, just a couple for you. And I don't know that we need to see any of your slides for the questions and observations that I have for you. With respect to the East Rural study, though, you did, you did have a slide that talked about how agricultural production has changed in that portion of the county. And that was a really significant portion, the argument that was made with the recent comprehensive plan amendment out in Lithia. You know, you heard a lot of folks say that, "Well, this land is really no longer suitable for production agriculture." But if you talk about a rural living opportunity, that choice, you know, I mentioned a moment ago that people play differently, right? Someone may want to jump on the four-wheeler or jump on their horse or whatnot. I don't know that, that the land being suitable for production agriculture necessarily matters in that context. So one thing that I would like to explore is maybe renaming both the comprehensive plan and zoning districts for lands that are now in an agricultural zoning district, like ASC 1, AR 5, what have you, to put less of an emphasis on the agriculture. And make no mistake about it, I'm not suggesting that we change the allowed uses. I would think that those would remain exactly the same, such that ag is an allowable use in those areas, but it de-emphasizes agriculture so that the argument can't be made that, you know, if a parcel's no longer suitable for production agriculture, that it still can't lend itself to living in a rural atmosphere or in the countryside, if you will, if that makes any sense.
Chair, let me ask, let me ask a question that's of your mind.
Sure.
What you're talking about, that's, those things are already in the comprehensive plan, am I correct? The way he's talking about it?
The comprehensive plan does permit, in, for example, the agricultural rural land use category, one unit per five.
But the change, the change he's talking about could not happen in the comprehensive plan at this particular point in time, am I right?
You could, that land could be used for rural residential or for agriculture right now.
This board, this board could change the name of the category, could change the name of it.
In the comprehensive plan?
I think we could do that by board action.
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't, as long as the bucket of rights that comes with that category remains the same, I don't know that it matters what its name is.
But I thought if you try to change in the comprehensive plan, that's going to take a change that has to go to Tallahassee, am I correct?
Well, yes, it would be a plan amendment that would have to.
Just get up and do it.
Right.
Well, I think they would see that we're just simply changing just the, how we label the category.
There's a timeframe that the comprehensive plan has to go to Tallahassee, just can't up and change it like that instead of to Tallahassee.
Well, we could change it, we could schedule it for the appropriate comp plan amendment cycle.
And when is that?
Well, we have amendment cycles four times a year, so we would fold it into, I guess, if that was the direction from the board, we would, you know, fold that into one of those cycles.
We're going to put the horses in the four-wheeler next to?
The horses and the four-wheeler are going to go to Tallahassee, too.
Look, I'm just, I'm just going to be candid in saying that, you know, I don't think that, that saying that, you know, and I'm going to pick on this one particular parcel, saying that it's no longer suitable for production agriculture is necessarily a valid argument, that, that it still wouldn't lend itself towards larger parcel development and things of that nature. So although nothing would change with respect to what would be allowed, production agriculture would most certainly still be allowed, but, but the name would reflect that, that a rural category means so much more than just production agriculture, if that makes any sense.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
Very good. Commissioner Kemp, you are next. You're recognized.
Thank you. The comments you just made about agriculture and rural, they make total sense to me. I think you might be talking about the discussion we had just recently, and it keeps getting pointed out that just because it's named agriculture, and like you said, don't change any of the rights, but I can appreciate and have spoken to the need for us to also preserve our rural lands and to have rural lands as a value and protection, just because crop, they, a person no longer desires to put crops on that land or says it's not suitable for agricultural land, doesn't mean that we change it to a much greater density than it already is as an agricultural land. And certainly, that's what has been done to a great extent in the Keystone area, and I would hope that we would be doing that in other areas, too. I think that that would be absolutely critical to having a sustainable future, because we can no longer sustain the kind of development we've had. And I think that's very clear. If we were able to pay for our growth, we would not have any problems at all. We would not be in the situation we are. We wouldn't be facing roads that we couldn't pay for. We wouldn't be facing amenities that we couldn't pay for. We'd be, because no other county, no other area, almost in the nation, is growing as fast and as furiously as we are. And the fact that we cannot pay for this growth tells us, on the face of it, that we are not going sustainably. And we are really at a critical point, I think. And we have got to look at this. We cannot be putting down fire stations and parks and roads and pipes and everything else beyond this urban service area at this time. We have already reached a critical point where we're not able to pay for the infrastructure that we need and provide the amenities and provide the quality of life that we are looking at. We, it's, it's not working out on the balance books. So I, I know that this is something that I believe is going to be looked at in the future. I hope that we bring it back this way. But we've been talking a lot about fiscal sustainability. It's one of our principles, quality of life. And I'd really like to see and hope that we have more analysis and information about that. I went to a very good workshop at the Regional Planning Council in St. Petersburg about a month ago. The room filled up with 100 people around the region for a presentation by a planner, Joe Minicozy. He's analyzed, done, analyzed counties, excuse me, I just get that, analyzed counties and cities around the nation. He's been hired by Sarasota, does work with Sarasota, and really looks at sustainable growth and return on investment and how you grow sustainably. He's been a principal planner or planner, a consultant for the city of Asheville that's done amazing things in how they've grown with the city and the county. But also, he's just been really all over, in great demand all around the coun, all around the country. And I was really pleased to see him in the local area. So I hope that we can look towards some of the principles and kind of information that he gives to reflect on this. And I can appreciate, I'm also wondering, I don't know about how, I know other counties are doing it, Loudoun County, Virginia, I was reading all about how they were really protecting their rural areas, and the pressure and development in Washington DC that's pushing out is, you know, has greatly affected those areas, yet they're making what economically sustainable decisions and deciding that they can't further grow and have their tax base supported, that it's costing not only quality of life but also dollars from those who live there. So I'd really like to see us pushing more in that area, can appreciate us going forward in the area of more economic analysis and economic analysis of sustainability. Also, in terms of the mixed use, I can appreciate the frustration with that category. I've been very frustrated with it because what, it apparently, because there's no kind of percentages on that, and I don't know how that works, but I understand other communities have it, but because we don't have that, we end up not really getting true mixed use. I saw that, you know, I think that there was a, a industrial site of sorts, or I don't, I'm not sure exactly what it was, in Ruskin, where they had to say that they were doing two uses in order to justify what their category was, but essentially, it was not actually what they were doing. So I'd rather have reality about this and have some realistic goals. And if we have pure categories that don't need the mixed use or it's not the best plan for the future, I'd just like to figure out how we get that done and get it done well. I'm not sure how that happens, but I just would like to express that as, as being a kind of frustration that I see moving forward. I'd also like to find out anything we can about transfer of development rights, especially when we're looking, for me, at this RP 2 that we talked about the other day, we're talking about making it RP 3. But what I would like is conservation easements over the land. If we're going to allow for 4,000 more homes to be put down and 40,000 trips to be added to these already overcrowded, oversaturated roads where people are crying when they come in here, you know, I just think we need to look at putting conservation easements in the favor of the county over those areas that are supposedly not going to be developed, although I've been told they're just being saved for the future. But I think we have to make sure that they're saved as open space for the future, because that's the only way that that would make sense to me. And finally, I just, again, as you all know, I focus incredibly on mobility and as it intertwines with what we do. And I can't see us, I think we really, really, and I appreciate Commissioner White's remarks with regards to the automobile, certainly, most of the county has been built out in a way that is not conducive at all to transit and is, I mean, our, it's no secret that our suburban areas were actually built to not have transit, to, you know, we have not, we don't have grids, we don't have easy ways to get in and out of places, we don't have walkable ways to get to transit. And I want to do whatever we can to start retrofitting, which I think this is partially, you know, what this is about, and thinking about that. But I thought it was interesting that Zipcar, of all places, apparently their CEO made a, issued principles that Uber and Lyft and other places have adopted with regards to mobility. And these were some of the principles they adopted. We plan our cities and their mobility together. This is Zipcar, Uber, and Lyft. We'll see if they, they stick to it, but this is the principle that they've adopted. We prioritize people over vehicles. We support the shared and efficient use of vehicles, lanes, curbs, and land. So I think, you know, I'd like to see us, and I think in the future, we hear a lot about automotive, automated vehicles, if these automated vehicles have no one in them, negative occupancy, or if they have just one person in them and they're going or if they have just one person in them and they're going back and forth, you know, I see that we could have a very miserable future, full of automated vehicles, you know, that are taking up road and not allowing for us to do what we need to do, so the shared and efficient use of vehicles, transit, I think is real important for us to be thinking about how all that plays in.
Okay. Is that it? Great, thank you. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you, ma'am Chair. I'll be fairly brief. First of all, Ms. Anita, thank you for a very thorough presentation. You never cease to do a good job, and we appreciate you. I think you were pretty objective in your research and what you presented us today for our consideration. For me, I think it's a lot easier to better plan for the future and correct the mistakes we've made in the past to try to alleviate larger problems in the future, especially in the areas of transportation. We know we have transportation issues today, we know those problems are gonna continue to grow, we know that resources to address it are gonna be challenging, so to begin to move our planning in a direction where we can begin to get roads, cars off the road and shorten distances that people have to travel will help alleviate the pressure valve of a problem growing in the future. The idea of recognizing five or six areas within our county as developable nodes where we are inclusive and we focus on providing the right incentives and opportunities for job development, you know, shopping and entertainment, recreation, and residential at all levels of the financial stratosphere. And now, we have smaller communities within a bigger community and less reason for people to have to do what I do, which is drive an hour and a half every day to go to the office. When you look more closely at communities, I'll use mine for an example, Tampa Palms, most all of my neighbors don't do what I do. They don't drive 30 miles to get to the office. They drive two or three miles. Most of them work at Florida Hospital, or at Moffitt Cancer Center, or at USF, but they work within a reasonable short distance of where they live, so that they minimize that time on the road and that expense. One of the problems we have in our urban areas is the cost of living. To buy a home like mine in Tampa Palms in this area of South Tampa would cost three times as much, and to most families, that's cost prohibitive, and that forces them to have to commute. So, in looking at our development, we need to take that into consideration as well, and that's the potential for escalating home values. You know, will we push people out of those homes that we expect them to live in close to where they may work? I know in the past, we've had to make some tough decisions to open the door for expanded development in areas where we didn't have development rights in the past. A lot of times, those were necessary during a tough economic downswing to keep people working and eating and keep the economy moving, but I think as the economy gets better and we move forward, we need to be putting most of our incentives and most of our encouragement and most of our forward thinking into doing what I heard a couple of our commissioners speak about, and that's putting the focus on infill. In the long run, it's a lot less expensive because we need fewer police stations, fewer fire stations, fewer bus stops, you know, fewer road expansions, and I think that, you know, we could make it sweet enough where those who would want to profit off of development could do so by focusing on infill, because right now, they want to go after the out parcels because it's less expensive and more profitable to develop it. But I think we can somewhat steer that with better thought-out policy. Lucia, I love the idea that you threw something that was important to me up there as an example. What do you want from me? We have not had a chance to talk about the results of the study, so you kind of blindsided me a little bit with that, but that's okay. It came out the way I kind of thought it would and told you that it most likely would. That 46th is the most preferred travel route for the vehicles, and that 42nd was the pedestrian route, and it would be to our advantage to identify that and then work with it and around it. Did that study also show that the effectiveness of continuing 46th up through the area where there are no roads right there to connect it to Bruce B. Downs so that New Tampa would have greater access to USF?
So, that is the ultimate project, is that it would connect to Bruce B. Downs, and our folks are beginning that analysis now to see. It is one of the projects that you approved in your $812 million list, so that, the work that was done on the land use side really did reveal that that was the solution that we needed to look for.
Everyone who lives up in New Tampa that works at either the hospital, the cancer center, or USF, uses that cut-through of that little two-lane road, and it's just unbelievable, the traffic with the students and the bicycles and the pedestrians, there's a lot of pedestrians there, because that's all student housing, and it just creates a ticking time bomb for an accident to happen, which they do on a regular basis. So, the idea of putting the focus on pedestrian on 42nd and automobile on 46th is really a good one, and making that cut-through happen would be really beneficial for all of the parties involved, but it's gonna be a challenging engineering project because there's environmentally sensitive lands in there.
And I think our folks are up to it. It also neatly connects to some of the improvements that USF is making on the southern end.
Yes, moving their entry.
Their entry, and so, we're working closely with them to ensure that we're able to align all those roadways and make it a seamless connection.
Well, that is the drive that the President does drive every morning when she goes to work, because she lives in Tampa Palms. Well, in all, that's basically what I had to say.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have some general questions. The recommendations came out Prosperity Committee about the comp plan, is that part of your streamlining that you're gonna bring back in?
It is.
Is it August or later in the fall?
I think we need to check the dates of when we will bring that back to you. We're coordinating calendars right now. The Economic Prosperity Committee recommendations, many of them are embedded in what we're saying today.
Right.
A lot of the administrative ones, there were 23 of them, almost all of them have already been implemented, and so, we are just checking to see how that works, but I think what we'll bring back to you is exactly how we're fitting these in and show connection back to the Economic Prosperity recommendations.
Those were fairly controversial, non-controversial.
There were the long-term ones.
There were some that were and then some that were not.
Right. So, the ones, especially as they deal with, we implemented mobility fees, we have transportation funding in place, and then a number of them now are dealing with comprehensive plan and integrating some of these ideas that we talked about here. They really did deal with fiscal sustainability and responsible growth, so we will bring that back for you, just crosswalk that.
Okay. The other question I had was, I looked at these maps about the allowable densities and what it went from one timeframe to another. I can't remember. You had two different maps, allowable densities and then actual developed densities. You remember those? Okay. So, I guess my question is, and I'm looking at US 41, where there's a lot of allowable density to be able to go down there, but the problem is, is at least up to about Big Bend, the infrastructure's not in place, and you know this, and you know my question, and Gibsonton is one of those areas. I mean, it is a pass-through community, it needs redevelopment really bad, no developer will go in there because I've asked them to, because there's no sewer and utility connections. So, is that gonna be part of your plan in looking at some of these areas that can be redeveloped? Because I think if we have allowable densities in these areas, we should look at making improvements so we can steer development into these areas.
I think that's exactly what we're trying to get to, is where can we do it? And Gibsonton is actually one of the areas we started looking at from a PLAT study and the land use and connections to Gibsonton Drive as well, so I think, Melissa, it's on target with what we're trying to.
It actually starts from Palm River all the way down, and I know that DOT is going to widen 41 to three lanes. I mean, you could put, I mean, it's easily gonna be workable for transportation, well, they're doing the PD&E on it now, but there, and it is a state road, but you could put transit on there if there's, if you develop it. I mean, transit's not gonna be, there won't be any people to pick up, but, you know, so I think it's, it's just, you know, I think these maps really show us a lot and tell us what to do without us trying to figure it out. That's kind of what my point is, and my opinion on if anybody wants to go outside the urban service area, they have to pay dearly for it. I've told you that. I mean, three times the mobility fees, three times the utility fees, just make them pay for it. If they want to go out there, they gotta improve the roads, they've gotta have the utilities in place, and, you know, I just think that's the way it should go, and it shouldn't be, the burden should not be on the county to make those changes for them. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized. That's all I have.
I'll be brief, because I know we have to get out of here in a half a meeting at 3:30. Let me thank all of you for such an excellent presentation. I think it's highly important that we continue to discuss these, and I was kidding with Commissioner White about the horses and the four-wheelers, but understand that sometimes those people that use the horses and four-wheelers want to come to other parts of this county for entertainment, to live, work, and play. We talked about the county will need 7,015 acres over the next 23 years, accommodate 100 million square feet of office and retail space, I mean, office and industrial spaces. Commissioner Murman was right, because the mere fact is that we've become the strip mall capital of the state of Florida, probably this country, and I think we need to go above and beyond looking at that. The other thing we talked about is by 2045, 2 million people will be in Hillsborough County. My question is this, we're gonna come back, let's face the big elephant in the room. As we do this, what's happened to our transportation needs? We just tapped it a little bit today on 46th and 42nd, but Commissioner Murman talked about a little bit of South County, and I think we gotta go above and beyond South County because it's just gross, everyone's not gonna be able to live in Tampa Palms or New Tampa and drive to USF to work. It's just not gonna happen that way. If they stay inside, expand the urban service area, or we fill a goal in infill and putting and developing infill, people just can't, will not be able to work in those areas of what they live, that's not gonna happen, let's face reality. So, I think if we're gonna come back and address this this summer or in the fall, the major issue we gotta look at, big elephant in the room, is transportation, major transportation. I won't be here in two years and eight months, some of you may be here, some of you may not be here, but let's stop playing around and look at what's out there in the future and say, you know, whether I'm here or not, I probably won't be here, we gotta make sure, yeah, two years and eight months, I'm gone. Y'all can forget it. We gotta look at the big elephant, the big elephant in the room is transportation, transportation, transportation. We could talk about all of the infill, all of expanding the urban service area, all of this acreage we're talking about, making sure we have industrial and not have all these retail spaces, but everybody cannot work in the neighborhood they live, just doesn't happen.
You make excellent point, because if you're gonna do a comp plan changes, if you don't integrate transportation into it, it's just not gonna be productive for us. And I mean, I can't say it any different, so I agree 100%. Okay, any more business to come before us?
Commissioners, I have just one note, and that is to recognize all the folks that worked on here. This really was, it took a village or a node, so it took a node of the planning commission staff, economic development staff, public works, public utility staff, a lot of people came together to pull this together for you today, so I just wanted to make a note of that.
Well, I personally want to thank you, I know, Mike, you allow these people to do all this great work, Melissa, the whole team out here, Lindsay, you guys, this was a stellar job. In fact, I can see taking this to a constituent meeting and just kind of showing them the way. I mean, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and it's gonna be a big change. Commissioner Miller?
And let me say that, too. I'm glad to see the planning commission and our staff working together, because there was a time, when I was a planning commissioner, it was like...
No, they sat on different sides of the room.
As one of our speakers comes and say, it was a war between the states.
Exactly.
And I'm just so happy to see us working together.
It's very refreshing, absolutely. It's really good to see. So, thank you, great job, and we're adjourned.